Welcome, everyone. We're just getting everything set up and behind the scenes, making sure all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. So just be patient with us. We're not quite at the hour. We will be starting right on the hour, and thank you for joining us.
Perfect. We are live.
Looks like we have quite a few folks joining us, so I just want to give it a couple more minutes, and then we'll start right on the hour. Okay? Okay, two minutes, just so you know. Are we ready to record, Valerie?
Yes, you're ready to go. You're live.
And it's recording?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
You're all good.
Okay. All right, wonderful. And all of our guests are ready to go. If you could just nod your head that you're ready? Okay, wonderful. Then we will go ahead and get started. Welcome, everyone, and thank you for joining us on behalf of the Pismo Beach Chamber of Commerce. We're certainly very glad that you're here. My name is Liz Kristofferson. I'm the founder and CEO of Empower Consulting Group, and I will be your moderator for this evening. The Chamber is having a membership drive in October, so I want to encourage you to check out the Facebook and website page to learn more about how you can participate in that. We have some wonderful guests here with us this evening, so let me just go over a few details so you will know how to participate. We do have a large audience, and out of respect for time and each other, we ask you to please limit your distractions, mute your phone now, and make sure that you're in a good spot to listen to this wonderful, wonderful forum that we're going to have tonight. The session is being livestreamed through Facebook, and it is being recorded. So if you miss a portion or you have to leave early, you'll be able to take a look at the recording later. We're going to be inviting the candidates to introduce themselves in just a couple of minutes and to answer some questions that we have for them. During the open forum, which will take place in the second half of the session, you'll have an opportunity to type in questions or comments through the chat box. We're going to be monitoring that, and we will get those in front of this group as quickly as we can. We'll do our best to get to as many as we can during the time that we have allotted. So I want to just remind you also that the views and opinions expressed are those of the candidates. They don't necessarily reflect the official policy or position of the Pismo Beach Chamber of Commerce or Empower Consulting Group. Any content provided by the candidates are the opinion and are not intended to malign any religion, ethnic group, club, organization, company, individual, or anyone or anything. So all of that housekeeping done, let's just go ahead and get started. Let's relax. Let's have a good time. Let's get to know these folks who want to be very committed to the city of Pismo Beach and to the council. So, city council candidates, welcome and thank you for joining us this evening. I'm going to ask each of you to just take a moment to tell us a little bit about you. And Deborah Lawson, we're going to go ahead and start with you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Deborah Lawson. I have lived and worked in the Pismo Beach area, Central Coast, for most of my life, and I have also raised my children here. The reason that I'm running for city council is to serve our residents and the small business owners. My objective is to achieve a balance of preserving the beauty of our neighborhoods as well as welcoming our visitors and bringing in that much-needed revenue.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Deborah. So let's go ahead and hear from Eric.
Thank you so much, again, to the Chamber and Liz for putting on this event. It's not exactly what we've done every four years or every two years, but it's still nice to be able to get together and talk about where we're going as a city. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the people of Pismo Beach for putting their confidence in me eight years ago when I ran on a platform promoting public service, promoting business, protecting our open space, and ensuring our quality of life. I feel good about where our council is and what we've accomplished in the past term and two terms. So I look forward to going forward and completing projects that we have.
Thank you, Eric. I appreciate that. And how about you, James? Let's hear from you.
Yes, hi. My name is James Pritchard, and I'm running for Pismo Beach City Council because I feel that some of our residents are having quality-of-life issues in our residential neighborhoods. I feel that I would like to run on a platform that would put residents first when it comes to considerations made by the city council for things that we do in the future. Some of the problems we're having are due to the negative side of tourism. Many of us feel that we live in parking lots for tourists. We would like to have a better quality of life. We feel it's not quite the quality of life that we should have, and that's why I'm running to try to promote that for our residents, and put residents first.
Excellent, James. Thank you for sharing. And how about we hear from Marcia?
Good evening, and thank you to Pismo Chamber Congress for putting this forum on tonight. My name is Marcia Guthrie. I'm a 24-year resident of Pismo Beach and a small business owner with an office on Price Street. I have served on the Pismo Beach City Council for the last four years, which was preceded by 10 years of activism resulting with voters approving our citizen-based initiative Measure H14 in 2014, giving the residents a voice in what happens in this area of the city. I have not wavered in my commitment to giving a voice to residents and have worked cohesively with other council members to accomplish so many important city goals during my term. I believe my experience as a local businessperson and current city council member has provided me with the knowledge and background, and more importantly, the ability to represent Pismo Beach residents in a positive and effective manner. I also bring the strong dedication and integrity needed for all elected officials. I look forward to answering your questions and getting to know some of the other candidates. Thank you.
Thanks, Marcia. And Scott, last but not least.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you, everyone. My name is Scott Newton, and I thank you for this opportunity. And my wife and I, we've been residents here for 10 years. We love Pismo Beach. We chose this place for its quality of life, and that's why we chose to raise our four kids here. And for me, it's about preserving that and making sure that for not just us, but our future generations, that this crown jewel here is protected. And over time, we've seen a focus kind of shift off the needs of the residents, and I want to see that focus come back. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much for your introductions. We truly appreciate the way that you shared a little bit about you and about your passion for Pismo Beach. So our first question, I'm going to say the question twice, that way everybody, make sure everybody can hear it, and then I will be calling on you. So I will call on you. When I call on you, then you'll have the opportunity to answer. So the first question is balancing tourism and our business needs with the needs of our residents can be a challenge. So how will you help develop win-win situations? Balancing tourism and our business needs with the needs of our residents can be a challenge. How will you help develop win-win situations? So Marcia, let's start with you.
So since COVID hit, this has been a challenging year. We have had so many visitors, and they're not our usual visitors. They're day trippers. They are initially was people that didn't care about the shelter in place. So trying to balance that out after we got over an initial shock, quite frankly, about the amount of people coming into our area was, we decided the pier, we tried to keep closed. Now, this is specific to this year because we have been inundated with an exorbitant amount of people more than usual. So we tried to keep the pier closed, at least the sections that we'd finished. It was, you know, it was done in parts, and so we kept it closed to keep the area contained, not a welcome-to-Pismo message, but if you're coming to the area and you want to dine, you're welcome to takeout. And of course, the beaches are state beaches.
Time's up. Thank you. So you're going to see, all of you, that the time will go very quickly, but to ensure everybody gets a chance, we've got to stay on track there. So Eric, let's hear from you. And for this, you know, you're each getting like a minute. So laser language, right?
Did I just lose half my time? So this is obviously, it has always been an issue in Pismo Beach. We are a tourist town. We are always going to be attractive to people from throughout the world. Tourism is a clean industry, and it's what we do well, but we also need to make certain that the impacts of tourism don't adversely impact our residents. We, obviously, with the pandemic, we need to make certain where it's safe as we can possibly be. I was in favor of the mask ordinance. We've worked with PBHA and our hospitality industries to make this as safe as possible while still encouraging business and allowing people to come here.
Great. Thank you. Okay, Scott, how about we hear from you?
We all know we have to balance the impacts of tourism with the needs of the residents. And to me, you know you've succeeded with that when the residents welcome tourism. And right now, we see residents almost at a point where they're just frustrated. I know that the focus has been too much on tourism. The TOT tax is a huge revenue generator for the city, the largest source of revenue. And, you know, at some point, the residents want to see some of that revenue actually put back into their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Deborah, let's hear your response.
I agree, there definitely needs to be a balance. One thing that I have noticed, especially with the COVID-19 situation, is there has been allowance for the small business owners to have outside dining and to encourage bringing those visitors in. But at the same time, with the state beaches being open, the adherence to guidelines are not, people do not participate in that 100%. And I think that that needs to be enforced because it's causing issues. Even where I live down at the beach, where young people are coming in, huge groups, and they think they have this little private area nobody's going to know about, and they're gathering in large numbers, and they're not adhering to the COVID-19. So I do think there's a balance. The trash and garbage that's left behind, that needs to be addressed because it does hurt the residents.
Thank you, Deborah. James? James, you need to unmute your phone. And unmute. There you go.
Sorry.
That's okay. No worries.
So the question is, how do you balance tourism with residential life? Actually, right now, I think things are a bit out of balance. You have the Chamber of Commerce who represents business. We have the LBID, which is a consortium of the city and the hotels spending lots of money to bring tourists here. The LBID goals are to bring tourists here 24/7/365. Who's speaking for the residents? Okay, we are the ones who are being impacted by this tourism. I talked to many people who don't like to go downtown. For example, we have, some streets have hundreds of people parking on them. If you talk to the people in the 100, 200 blocks of many of the streets in Shell Beach, they're impacted by restaurant traffic. The problem is, we don't have the infrastructure to support the tourism they were courting. I agree that we need the money to make improvements. Tourism is, Eric said, is a clean business. I'm not so sure when you look at the trash and the noise pollution we've put up with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. As you see, a minute goes by really quickly. So let me just, next question, we're going to move on. If you are an incumbent, what have you specifically done for the city? If you are a newcomer, what are your top two goals? And I think what I'll do, just to facilitate a little bit easier for you, when you're down to five seconds, I'll just put my hand up like this so you'll know you only have so many seconds left, okay? Hopefully, that will help you. So why don't we go ahead and give Deborah a chance to start off this session, this question? So again, if you're an incumbent, what have you specifically done for the city? If you're a newcomer, what are your top two goals? Deborah? Unmute, sweetheart. There you go.
As a newcomer, also to address the affordable housing in our area, make sure that the city of Pismo Beach is compliant to that. And then in reference to COVID-19, I would want to make sure that as a city, that we definitely enforce the guidelines by the CDC, by the science community, to keep all of us safe and protected.
Wonderful. Deborah, so let's hear from Scott.
I know you asked for two goals. Well, I have a little different opinion on that. To me, it really isn't about what I want. It's really about what the residents want. And so my first step would be is to actually do more reaching out and find out, what do the residents that live here want? What things are missing in their quality of life? And then the next job is for us, determine how to make those things happen. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So James, let's hear from you.
Yes, hi. Obviously, I'm a newcomer. So my priorities would be to facilitate an atmosphere of civic involvement, the city responsiveness to resident concerns, promote better community engagement in public meetings, have an open-door policy, reach out to the public and make it easy for them to engage. The current status quo is limited engagement. Oftentimes, I watch the meetings. I see there's really not a lot of people on the Zoom with the city council meetings, the planning commission meetings. I think we need to let people know that their input is wanted. A lot of people tell me things that they don't, that they'd like to express, and I just think if we open things up a little bit better and get more responsiveness from citizens, that we can move forward to help them better.
Excellent. Thank you, James. Eric, let's hear from you next.
Well, first and foremost, government's responsibility is to keep its citizens safe. Pismo Beach has a public safety department second to none. We also are in the strongest fiscal position of any city in the state. We've built a new pier. We have a new plaza. We have the Pismo Preserve. We have the streetscape. We have paths that will take kids back and forth to school, that they can ride their bikes. They can walk. I'm proud of so many things that have been accomplished in the past four years on the city council. I think that our city has accomplished more than we have in 25 years before. Sure, there's more that can be done, but I'm proud of our accomplishments, and I look forward to more in the future.
Wonderful. Thank you. And Marcia, let's hear from you.
Well, Eric covered quite a bit of our accomplishments over the last four years, but one thing I'm particularly proud of that I was responsible for personally was the upgrading of our website. And it was timely because now, of course, we're online on Zoom, having our meetings. But to make it easier for residents to sign up, to get texts, to get notifications of meetings, to participate, and actually, our participation rate has gone up, and people have been notified, and they are sending us letters and engaging with us. So part of that is access Pismo and notify me and a couple other nuances of the website. We are preserving now all of our city decisions and ordinances indefinitely forever. I did a ton of research in my activism, and that's so important to have the history available for the public. Thank you.
That's great. Thanks. Thanks again, all of you, for your answers to this question. So the next one, "Some people in our community say that we have traffic problems. What do you think? How would you mitigate those concerns or change the situation?" Again, just to repeat, "Some people in our community say that we have traffic problems. What do you think? How would you mitigate those concerns or change the situation?" So let's hear from Eric first.
So the only people that don't think that we have traffic problems are those that moved from Los Angeles or the Bay Area within the past six months. Of course, we have traffic problems. We have problems on the 101, especially during rush hour. We have problems downtown. And some of the ways that we can mitigate those problems are by putting in a parking structure. Let's get people out of their cars. The streetscape, from my point of view, is just a down payment on having more bike lanes, on getting people more actively doing, more active transportation. It doesn't just roll off my tongue, but the point is, is let's get people out of their cars. Let's get people biking. Let's bring in more shuttles so that we don't have as many issues with people that want to go downtown, you know, having to take their cars. There's any number of ways that we can promote these things. I've been a strong advocate in Sacramento.
We're going to hear from James. Thank you. Thank you, Eric. James, let's hear from you.
Yes, hi. Yes, we do have traffic problems, and Eric is right. People, I'm from the Bay Area myself, and although this seems kind of lightweight compared to some of that, it's, there is a lot of traffic. I hear a lot of complaints on it. My solution would be to provide parking lots with shuttle buses to take people to popular venues. Some of the bigger cities along the coast have done that. I'd work with Caltrans to identify park-and-ride areas the shuttles could utilize. And in order to be successful, shuttles should be frequent and reliable. I think that those would help as well as bike paths and just, you know, better public transportation that people could become familiar with and utilize.
Thank you, James. Let's jump over to Scott.
Well, we all agree, there's definitely traffic problems. And my question would be is more, what have we done over the last 10 years to actually make them go away? And what we've done is actually remove parking spaces. And so we have a net loss with our projects we've done. We know the only solution is going to be shuttling, biking, other modes of transportation. We cannot just continue to shove more cars downtown and think that our infrastructure can support those cars because there's just simply no room. The traffic's so bad right now, it's actually a safety hazard when you can't get through town. Thank you.
Thank you. And Marcia, let's hear from you.
Well, the city, you know, and I agree with everything that has been said, and I think part of the problem is accumulated impacts from underparking projects in the past that aggravated the situation. The city recently updated their traffic circulation element, and there are things that we can do, very small and simple things that we can do to improve our circulation through town. There's not much we can do about Caltrans. They don't have the money to improve, widen the road by 2035. We've applied to take over Highway 1 so we can make improvements there and help that circulation, help the circulation through there. There are several different measures that I don't have time to go into, but once they're in place, they will help our circulation. And the shuttle idea, I have been a big fan of for a very long time, and hopefully, we can make that happen. We already have two shuttles, but we need more. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. And Deborah, your turn.
Yes, I was just going to sort of comment, even though I don't have a lot of knowledge about Caltrans and the freeway, but every single day at a certain time, it's completely backed up on Highway 101. And I know that there's been a third lane put in that does end, and if it was possible, if there could be an additional lane extended, I think that that would be helpful. Just in my experience of living here my whole life, when there's been the O'Rourke Randy Festival, or if there's concerts in Avila Beach, there's been buses scheduled to the...
So Deborah, we keep losing you, so there may be an internet connection issue on your end. If there's a way for you to dial in by phone, it will be able to hear your audio whether or not there's an internet issue. So I'm going to give her, if we can get her back there. And let me just, okay. So I'm just going to make myself a quick note here so that we can continue to move on. Hopefully, Deborah will be able to join us again. And Valerie, Jeanette, or Lisa, if one of you could connect with her and ask her, if nothing else, if she could at least join us by phone, I can just, even though I won't be able to see her video, I'll at least be able to call on her, and then she can respond as we continue to go through this process. So let me see, we lost her right there. Okay, so, thank you. So our next question, three parts to this question. I feel like a game show host, you know, but you don't have all those gizmos and sounds and cool prizes behind me. Well, there is kind of a really cool prize behind me. But three parts to this question. One, what neighborhood do you live in? Why? And where are your favorite places to spend time in town? So James, let's start with you.
I live on El Portel Drive on the far end of Shell Beach. My favorite things, I, well, we chose this part of town because we found a house that was available. We loved it. We looked around a lot. We looked in a lot of places, and we found this house, and we jumped on it. We love it. We've been remodeling. My favorite place to go in town is, I like just walking around. I like seeing the various businesses walking on the pier. What was this, there was another part of the question, I'm sorry.
What neighborhood do you live in? Why? And what are your favorite places to spend time in town? So I think you answered that.
Yeah, like downtown. That's one of the reasons we moved here, because it's a funky beach town and probably one of the last classic ones in California, and I think it's something that should be preserved. And I understand why people come here. That's what brought us here, and I hope it continues.
Great. Thank you. And Marcia, let's have you answer that question.
I live on the south end of town, off James Way, almost to Oak Park. And we moved here many moons ago. My daughter was in kindergarten, was just starting kindergarten at Shell Beach Elementary, and she's now getting her... And she's now getting her master's, so many years ago. And it has a large yard. She was in 4H. We, you know, it just was very family oriented and close to everything. My favorite thing to do, there's a spot which I'm not going to disclose in Pismo Beach where you have full view of any whales, dolphins, pelicans. And once I disclose the spot, it won't be called the secret spot any longer, but that's my favorite place to be. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Marcia. And Eric, how about you?
So I live in Shell Beach and I also used to be in 4H, Marcia. And I was in the goat unit, so I guess I could have a goat, except the lots are a little small here in Shell. I, I actually love Shell Beach for the same reason you love your part of town. It's such a sense of community. We all, well, probably just because we have to, we all kind of live together. Everyone hangs out, everyone's friendly, you know, we share garden stuff together. My, my favorite place is actually behind you Liz. I love to go and run on the beach. And, but I especially love to go just at sunup, right, right behind you, along the pier where the, the sun and sky are shining on the sand.
Wonderful. Great, thank you. And Scott?
Well, I also live in Shell Beach in the so-called Village area, probably home of the longest blocks in the city with the most homes on the smallest blocks. And are the reason why I love it is you can do your yard work in about five minutes per month. But, you know, one of the great things about living in this area is you walk to the top of the block, grab the sandwiches, Sandoz, walk to the end of the block, and you've got the, one of the best views in the world.
I like that, the idea of the best, best views in the world. I love how each of you had something about what you really love about the community and some of it was overlapping, some of it was the same, but it was unique for you, right? It was your perspective, which is really, really wonderful. It's good to hear people talk about their community in a way that makes you feel like, wow, you want to be part of it, right? So question, our next question, how would you help to support small businesses in our area who have been impacted by COVID? So two parts to this. What are your long-term recovery plans? So again, two parts to this question. How would you help to support small businesses in our area who have been impacted by COVID? And what are your long-term recovery plans? So Scott, let's start with you.
So on the short term, I mean, I don't think there's anyone here that doesn't want to help small business survive this. And it really is about all hands on deck, us working as a community, making sure we spend all of our dollars here locally. You know, fortunately, we've got the best weather in the world where so many of our restaurants and merchants can actually expand in the outdoor area. I'm all for giving them all the space they need. Long-term, I'm not even against underwriting loans to these, to these businesses. This, they're under the duress of something that they have no control over. And that's what we have to understand. This financial situation for them can be, you know, just, I don't want to see the end of the chapter of their businesses. So we need to step up to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, how about you?
Of course, I agree with Scott that we are all in favor of supporting small business. And to be blunt, this is where, where some experience and comes, comes in handy. Pismo Beach took the, our city government took the, the lead in passing and getting 1090 passed to bring money into our community to help support business, to help transition away from Diablo Canyon being closed. That money can help to support small business right now. I also am in favor of project labor agreements that when we do projects where taxpayers locally are, are paying for them, like Central Coast Blue, that this money stays here and it goes to our businesses. It goes to our, our local residents and it helps with a business multiplier effect. It's not just about pretty words, it's about policies.
Great. James, let's hear from you.
Yes, hi. I think we should remain flexible and responsive to the needs of small businesses. I think we should grant as many other requests as we can to stay open. And I know a lot of places are takeout only as that, as things expand. I'd like to make sure that we can help them. As far as long-term, I think they need more parking. I'd like to see more parking structures for restaurants, places, maybe not structures, but more parking lots. A lot of the neighborhoods are impacted by restaurant parking, but I know they, they'd like to have more parking and whatever they need, we should try to provide it for them.
Excellent. Thank you, James. And Marcia?
I'm very proud of how the city has reacted to COVID-19 with our businesses. We held business online meetings with the businesses once every other week in that where we shared information and what was working for one business and what was working for another businesses, who was having success with the PPP loan. So that was critical, I think, initially. And then we were the first city to open up parking lots for restaurants so they could serve, actually seat people instead of to go. The, the profit margin's a little greater when you can have seated dining along with converting our parking spaces so everyone could have outdoor dining if they chose. I, in the future, I think that working side by side as we had to have done, we have had one business closure and I'm very proud of that. So working side by side and giving our businesses what they need is going to be critical going forward. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. So we've, we've come to the end of this portion of the questions. I do have some other questions that are from the audience, but I'd like to take a minute or two to just check in and see if Deborah's going to be able to rejoin us. So if you need to get some water, just stand up from your chair, whatever, just take that moment to do that now. And I'm going to go ahead and, and see if I can connect with my behind the scenes team and see if we have some answers there. Okay, okay. Okay, so for those of you that are with us, audience-wise, thank you so very much. It looks like Deborah is, is working on joining us with audio. So Deborah, can you say hello? I see your beautiful face. I just can't hear you yet, Deborah.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now. So one of the things that I would like to suggest to you, it seems there might be an internet connection issue where you're at. And only if you're comfortable, you can always stop the video and just participate with the audio portion of.
My Wi-Fi is down and I'm using a personal hotspot.
Oh, that's probably what the issue is then, because you need a certain amount of bandwidth to have video as well as audio. So it's, it's completely up to you. If you want to keep trying to work.
Is that a little bit?
Yeah, what I was going to say is if you turn off the camera, then you will be able to, we'll be able to hear you. Or if you want to just dial in, I can get you the dial-in information and you could call in. And then at least we can hear you. We may not be able to see you, but at least we'll be able to hear you. So let me just do that really quickly so that we can get that to you.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Perfect. Okay, so Deborah, say hello and I just want to just make sure that I can hear you well and that our audience can hear you well. Maybe not. So thanks, everyone, for your patience while we try to get this sorted out. We want to make sure that all the candidates have an opportunity to share their insight related to the questions that we've asked. And it seems like Deborah's having trouble. Okay, thanks, Jeanette. I'm going to go ahead and keep moving on. If we get Deborah back, we will give her an opportunity to answer some of these questions that the rest of you have been able to answer. I want to go ahead and, you know, again, say thank you to the leaders at the chamber and to the folks who contributed to crafting these great, great questions. And now we do have some questions and comments from the audience. So we're going to go ahead in a similar fashion. I will be receiving them. I will be putting them out to you. Each of you will get an opportunity to answer. You have about one minute. And we, before we wrap up at the end, you'll also each get about two minutes for a closing statement. But before we get to that point, I'll let you know. So let's go ahead and go through some of the questions that we have received from participants in the audience. Who, those who registered had an opportunity to send questions in advance. And then those of you who are with us now, either on Facebook or Zoom, as you chat them, type them into the chat boxes, we'll be monitoring that and getting that to you. So the first question that I have in our open forum section is how do you plan to provide resident safety and prevent crime when the city approved 50-unit low-income housing project for North Fourth Street, of which approximately 30% is allocated to be used for youth in transition? So Marcia, let's start with you.
Well, transitional housing is not just for youth, first of all, but you are assuming that people of low income commit more crimes. I mean, I'm not going to validate that. Unfortunately, I don't think that's true. The statistics don't bear that out. A lot of people that are found themselves without homes, you're going to see a lot more with the amount of businesses that have laid off and the people that don't have regular income coming in. So this is a much needed, these units are much needed for this area. And I don't believe that they are, they commit more crimes than anybody else. I, they just want a second chance. There's a lot of hoops and qualifications that people have to go through before they are allowed to rent in these housing units. So I am not worried at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. Scott?
I agree with Marcia. I, I come from one of the poorest cities in California and where everyone was struggling. And to say people that are struggling to pay for housing or cause a greater crime issue, honestly, it's a sad question, but I do believe that, you know, there's going to be families there and we definitely have to provide, you know, opportunities and things to keep our youth busy. So we, for our youth, we definitely need to reinvest in our city and give them activities. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Hi, I agree with the previous speakers. I don't believe that low income, income equals more crime. These are people that need help in transition. I've known people like that and people are just looking for a helping hand. I think that if we have an opportunity to provide something for them, to help them get a better leg up on life, especially when they're young, will reap the dividends for down the road.
Excellent. Thank you, James. Eric?
Sorry, I guess I could only echo the comments of, of everyone else. There's being, being poor is not a crime and having, having housing issues is, is unrelated to any criminal activity. That's not, it's not true and we shouldn't be looking at things that way. We're all in this together.
Thank you. So our next question, how do you plan to address homeless crime and safety hygiene issues affecting our community? So this time, let's start with James.
Okay, I think as far as homelessness goes, I think we should have shelters for those who want to use them. I know that not everybody wants to use them. A lot of people would actually prefer to live on the street. But I think homeless shelters that are taken care of by charitable workers, people who, who want to help other people is a good thing and I think we should encourage that.
Okay, thank you. Scott?
You know, I think it's part of a bigger problem. If you want to help the homeless, it's not about giving them just a home. It's not just about a shower. It's about all services. And the city's going to have to, you know, engage with the county and the county's got to step up. And all of our cities got to work together, provide these resources that they need. One small city providing limited resources is just a Band-Aid on a bigger problem. The county could work together with all this funding, funding it equally and fairly, and then we could make a difference.
I'm on the line now, by the way.
Deborah, welcome. We're glad that you're here. So let me go ahead and just have you chime in with this question. And then we'll, we'll give you some time in a few moments to answer a couple of other, the other questions that everyone else got to answer. So how do you plan to address homeless crime and safety hygiene issues affecting our community?
And safety hygiene issues?
Yes.
Okay, in regard to the homeless?
Yes. It says homeless crime and safety hygiene.
Okay. I do know that as far as hygiene, there's, there's, there's been a company or person in the San Luis Obispo area that actually will provide showers for the homeless people to clean themselves up. And he'll bring, he'll bring the showers to certain areas on certain days. That might be something that we could implement for the hygiene aspect of it. In regard to crime and homelessness, there's many reasons that people are homeless. And when they're homeless, there's, there's different reasons why they do commit crime. And I do believe heartily in programs provided for the homeless so that each individual person can be addressed and helped. And this, this would help in lessening crime and get more people off of the street.
Wonderful, thank you. So let's hear from Eric.
This is another difficult question by just the way it's phrased. The, the homeless are more likely to be victims of crimes than they are to commit crimes. We need to help these people. Nobody should be, should be homeless. Nobody should be hungry. Nobody should be lacking in clothing. We need to, I agree with Scott. We need to work with the county. We need to work with our, our neighboring cities. And, and we need to find out ways to provide services as, as Marcia mentioned.
Okay, so let me see here. Did I get everyone? Marcia, did you get, you need to answer the question. Yeah, thank you. I was looking at the initials. Wait a minute.
Yeah, it was kind of a two-parter. So here's the deal. I work closely with Five Cities Homeless Coalition and I'm on HSOC. And, you know, the crime and homelessness, it's not, some people assume they go hand in hand and they don't. But I want to remind everybody that we got a tremendous amount of funding here in South County to buy a building for a, for housing units and for a shelter. And the neighborhood and the public were in such an uproar, it just got squashed. So that is another, besides trying to help the homeless, the neighborhood and the public's reaction caused it to go away. So that's, it's, that problem is actually twofold. We do have services here that officers, Pismo Beach officers are trained to take individuals or to direct them to a certain area for services. But we all need, as Eric says, we're in this together. We, we've got to all work together to, for a solution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I am just looking. Okay, thank you very much. I am just looking. So here's a really good question that's come through the Zoom chat. And it says, what specific actions are you going to take to ensure you understand what your constituents want? So why don't we start off with Eric for that question?
Well, well, for one is I'm out in the community. I'm out in the community on a regular basis. I engage in any number of community of events. I, well, I mean, it's, it's really honestly a difficult thing to talk about right now because we're locked down in a pandemic. Under normal circumstances, I am engaged with the community face-to-face. And we talk about, we talk about issues and we talk about what to do in our community. I'll give a simple example is kids running around. They are out of school right now. I know I'm going to run out of time. Long story short, kids on bikes, they talk to me about the council. I get a knock on the door and a note's left behind with 12 things that they want to do to improve their community. That's the kind of engagement that I bring and all council members should bring.
Thank you. Thank you. So Scott, let's hear from you.
With me running for city council, I've been hosting these outdoor park meetings. And I basically revolve them each week at the various parks. And it's nice. We have a lot of room. Everyone can have plenty of spacing for safety. And still, nothing beats face-to-face interaction. And I try to vary the time so I can get as many people involved as possible. And if elected, that's something I'd like to continue to do.
Wonderful. Thank you. And let's hear from Deborah.
Well, since I've been running for city council and I've wanted to reach the residents of Pismo Beach, I actually have been going door-to-door. However, taking in COVID-19, I bring a little bag with me. I have my mask. I have my disinfectant. And I make sure that I stay, I'm outside and I'm six feet away. And I do it the simple way and knock on doors and provide my information. And when a resident wants to engage me, I'm more than happy to stop and take the time and listen to that individual person. So that's what I do.
Okay, Marcia?
Well, I'm also a resident, along with serving on the city council, so, and in business. So I am out in the community quite a bit, talking to people, talking to neighbors. This, this area is really conducive. People are outside a lot. So it's really easy to engage with the public. And any correspondence it's sent to me, whether it's my personal email or city email, I answer and engage with the public. Living in the community is, can sometimes give you some of the answers. I mean, we see the same things that the public is seeing. But of course, now going door-to-door, I am hearing a lot from a lot more residents. But being a member of the public, it's not hard to get out there and engage with people and have normal conversations like neighbors do, like friends do, and figure out where everybody is.
Thank you, Marcia. James?
Yes, hi. I'll continue to do what I have been doing. I've been going door-to-door since middle of May, trying to get signatures for a citizens initiative that I was working on. I've kept track of the people I've talked to and it's been in the hundreds. By talking to people that I have, I've gotten a pretty good knowledge of the things that they would like to have, the things that they would like to see done. And that's how I developed my residence-first platform. A lot of people feel that they're being left behind and that the city council is too focused on business. They'd like to see their streets paved. They'd like to see the, some things done that would help them. And so I'll continue to go door-to-door, talking to them and hearing what they have to say.
Great. Thank you very much.
I've also been, well, it's not just my neighborhood. I've, I've covered all of Shell Beach and moving around town.
Thank you. Thank you. So economic development is important for all communities. What is your plan to expand the city's tax capacity? So let's start with you, James. You got to turn the microphone. There you go.
To expand the tax capacity, do we really need that? I mean, we have a lot of hotel taxes. We have money coming in. To increase the tax capacity means more tourists, right? I'm not sure that people are really in favor of that. I think they'd like to see things slow down a bit. I feel, think that they feel impacted by tourism. I'm sure everybody wants more money to do things. I think that people would like to see the money spent on things in their neighborhoods. I don't know. I'd have to think about that a little bit, but I, but I know that we are the wealthiest city around. But a wealthy city should not have streets that need paving and things like that. So
Thank you.
We have to look at that.
Thank you. Scott?
I don't know if I would look at it as a term of increasing our taxing ability and creation. It's, our economic development should be more about making our businesses stronger and allowing them to expand. And the first step of doing that is actually mitigating the negative impacts that we have now so that everybody welcomes it. What good does it do if we try to shove twice as many people downtown if we just logjam it? We're going to have to start putting things in place and stop talking about it and have efficient systems to move people downtown, or there's no way to grow that base any larger. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah?
Well, I know that there is going to be an introduction of a bed tax in Pismo Beach. And it's been, from what I understand, it's been over three decades or 30 years since something like this has been implemented. And I myself do support that bed tax.
Okay, thank you. Marcia?
Well, you don't necessarily have to have more tourists to increase the revenue because of this additional TOT tax that we have on November's ballot will increase the cost for, for one person coming here. And the revenue raised for that will go towards police and fire. So they can, new housing for them, updated housing, so their response to our community is shortened and they're more efficient. It's much needed. So I don't necessarily think that you have to flood the downtown with tourists to increase your revenue. And the city manages our money so very well that it is almost like we do have additional revenue. So I don't, I don't agree with you have to increase people to increase your revenue. We're finding ways to do it and make improvements in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
I agree with Marcia 100%. I presume this question was about the TOT tax increase, which I am 100% in favor of. Tourism does have impacts on us. It impacts our, our, our police department. It impacts our fire department. It impacts our streets. And at the end of the day, the most important thing that government needs to do is protect public safety. And we should be increasing that the TOT is paid for by tourists. And they, to a certain extent, are the ones that are impacting our public services. That's why we probably have more police than we normally would have for a city of 8,000. That's why we have a second-to-none fire department. If, if nothing else, we should appreciate their efforts this year. I am 100% in favor of it and I will be voting yes on our TOT tax increase in November.
Thank you. So we do still have more questions, but I'd like to give Deborah a chance to catch up. So Deborah, this question is just for you. When we lost you, the question that I had asked was, some people in our community say that we have traffic problems. What do you think? And how would you mitigate those concerns or change the situation?
Oh, okay. I, here I thought that you heard everything I said and I was getting disconnected. All right. So I was talking about Caltrans and, and the highway. And I know that there's been a third lane previously added. It's for a short distance. And I'm not sure if there's a possibility of extending that third lane, but that would be, that would be somewhat of a solution as far as the freeway is concerned. In regard to town, it would be better to have people walking and biking and hiking in, in our area. However, even though the city of Pismo has done a really great job with that, very good, there are still areas that are very dangerous to try to walk or even bike. So if I would, I would definitely pursue being able to expand those areas to make them more pedestrian-friendly and bike-friendly. As far as perhaps not bringing in so many cars, vehicles into Pismo, I know that Avila has a trolley that brings people to concerts and what have you. And that, that might be something that the city of Pismo could look into, have people park in a designated area and, and bring them in to the city of Pismo. Because I do know that in downtown Pismo, it's literally on weekends backed up. You cannot even, you can't even get through the city of Pismo. It's so backed up with traffic.
Wonderful. Thank you. So one more question for you and then we'll jump back to a group question. What neighborhood do you live in? Why? And where are your favorite places to spend time in town?
Okay. I live in the neighborhood of Shell Beach. I live off of the Ebb Tide cul-de-sac. And before COVID, it's getting, I'm, I'm actually getting back out there again. But I have loved going to the different restaurants in Shell Beach and enjoying my time with my husband, Shell Beach Brew. And then I cannot remember the name of the restaurant right off the top of my head, but going to the restaurant there that just opened up on Shell Beach Road where you can sit outside and they have a fantastic lobster roll. I also love going into San Luis Obispo and my husband and I love attending Slow Brew, going to Slow Brew concert events there. So we definitely love the local events and, and the local eatery.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you. And thanks, everyone else, for giving us a chance to catch up there. So my next question to everybody, and I'll call on you individually, what is your position on vacation home rentals in our residential community? So let's go ahead and start with Marcia. What is your position on vacation home rentals in our residential communities?
Well, when we passed, it was a very big concern. We, we were rampant with them and they were unregulated. And because of some recent laws passed, when we passed our vacation rental ordinance, we put certain rules in, like the vacation rental owner, it has to be owner-occupied. It has to be their primary residence. In other words, vacant homeowners or homeowners that it's their second home or investment, it was no longer, they were no longer able to rent it out because it's, it was like an unmanaged hotel. And I think that has helped to maybe bring some sanity back to some of the neighborhoods. We have a complaint hotline. We have set things up. So it is so far run very efficiently. And we have people on board that are continually looking for rentals that shouldn't be there. I am not a fan of vacation rentals unmanned. This, I think our rules are fair and I think it helps to keep the owner responsible for the conduct of their tenants. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. And James?
Yes, hi. Going door-to-door, I've heard from a lot of residents on short-term rentals. A lot of them think that they're a nuisance. They also feel that there are some in their neighborhoods that are still unregistered. They also feel that when they call the city to complain about things, that complaints are not always followed through. I think most people would like to see them banned, but I, I think that we can't do that because of the coastal commission. I know that some cities have banned them down south in California. I think that through better enforcement, we could probably make it work a lot better. But that's what I hear from other people and they'd like to see the, the regulation rules followed through. Also, they'd like to see people fined. I've had people tell me that when they've complained, that the police will go over there, but fines don't, don't result. And then when they call the owners of the property, the owners are, don't do a lot to help. So I think better enforcement of the rules and regulations we have would go a long way towards making it a better situation for everybody.
Thank you, James. Deborah, let's hear from you.
Well, I'm, I am not for short-term vacation rentals in residential neighborhoods. I actually had a situation where I, my home is next to condominium complex. And one of the residents decided to make their condominium a short-term vacation rental. I will say, I did contact the city of Pismo and I, and I did use access through the city of Pismo. And they, in fact, did follow up and that was not allowed. And the owner was contacted. He was a very stubborn owner and did not listen initially. But with the constant contact, he did finally stop renting out his condominium as a short-term vacation rental. So I definitely am not for, for that. And I do, I have seen City of Pismo Beach enforce it.
Thank you, Deborah. Eric?
So I, I agree with Marcia. This is an accomplishment that I think that the city of Pismo Beach should be proud of. Four years ago, we had a, a ban on short-term vacation rentals that was unenforceable. The coastal commission had not improved our local coastal plan that, that banned it when, previously, when the city would go to court to try and enforce our ordinance, we would lose. So the city council got an ad hoc committee together with, I'll be fast, with short-term vacation rental, good, bad neighbors, council members, city staff. And they came up with an ordinance that is now the standard for the state of California. And it says, if you want to do a short-term vacation rental with you there, you're keeping on your guest. You know what? We, we are kind of okay with that. If you're going away for a couple of weeks and you have somebody that was, is looking after it, you can do that. We've totally cut down on the number of short-term vacation rentals. A few are good, many are bad.
Okay. Scott?
Well, you know, the vacation rental ordinance is working. I know quite a few people that do rent their homes out. And you know what? They're responsible neighbors. They're the primary resident. And, you know, people do have personal property rights. And do I want a, a city filled with a bunch of VRBOs? Absolutely not. But the way this works, if you look at the list and the number of approved residences that are on that list, it's actually a very short list. I think people would be amazed if they realize how few are on there. The only thing I'd say is I'm for absolute strict enforcement, though. Anytime we do catch someone who is renting their place out, it has not gone through the approval process.
Thank you, Scott. So Deborah, I'm going to have this question just for you. This is one of the catch-up questions. How would you help to support small businesses in our area who have been impacted by COVID? What are your long-term recovery plans?
Well, what's happening now in regard to the reopening of many of these businesses? We are under these guidelines for these businesses to open. But as far as long term, I would, I would say that if we do adhere to the COVID-19 guidelines and our COVID cases are down, then we can reopen all of our businesses. And even though initially it may be a limited capacity, as time goes on and, and we do find a vaccine, then I would want to see all the businesses completely open and operating at full capacity and creating a healthy business for all small businesses.
Thank you, Deborah. And again, thank you, everyone, for your patience as we try to catch up here. I want to just take a minute for us to, you know, again, take a quick breath, get a, get a sip of water. I want to encourage our audience. If you have questions, you can type them into the chat box. If you're watching this through Facebook, you can type your questions into there. Those are getting forwarded on to us. So we do have some more questions to continue our conversation here this evening. So let me go ahead and switch over now. This will be for all of you. So do you support the 1% increase in transient occupancy tax on the ballot? It's proposed to pay for a new emergency services center. So how would you remove the increase in tax after the center is built? So part one is, do you support that 1% increase in TOT on the ballot? And part two is, how are you going to remove the increase in tax after the center is built? So Eric, why don't we start with you?
I think, yes, I support the tax 100%. I, I think public safety is important. And in terms of removing the tax, I think I would just remind all our, all our participants here today and attendees that this is a TOT. It's a, it's a tax on, on the visitors. And once we've paid for, paid for the, the help in public services, we can always, we can always reevaluate these things. Honestly, is if, if a tax like this going forward? And I'll remind everyone that the Pismo Beach Hospitality Association supports this tax 100%. The hoteliers are on board with this. I would look into having this tax pay for other public services in the city that are also impacted by tourism. I would, I would use it to purchase another Pismo Preserve in Price Canyon or Los Robles del Mar, or use things to upgrade our infrastructure, underground utilities. I would use it to, to fix our roads and improve our roads. I honestly, I don't know that I would get rid of it.
Thank you, Eric. Deborah? Deborah, did you hear me call you? Or did we lose you again?
Yes, I, no, I, I apologize. I was on mute. I, I do support it. I would say that after the building was completed, if this is something that the residents felt very strongly as far as removing it, then I would think that that would be something that would be put on the ballot for, for a vote, just like adding it this time.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. James?
So since when is a tax ever temporary? We always hear, I mean, I know there's taxes which would go away, but I'm in favor of this one. I think it's a good one. It is, would be very useful for making the fire department the way we want to building, making the new building. The money could be used for a lot of infrastructure improvements. I would, I would be in favor of keeping it on. I think, you know, putting it to a vote with the residents is also a good idea. But I think that the money could be well spent and we could make Pismo Beach the gem that we believe it should be.
Thank you, James. Marcia, let's hear from you.
Yes, I support the ballot measure. And I believe there's a sunset clause in there. So at that time, we can choose to renew it or, you know, let it drop off. So I support it. I support the monies that it's going to bring in. And it will help in remedies to our excessive tourism at times. So starting with the police and fire. Thank you.
All right, Scott?
Yeah, I am against the increase because I'm against misleading taxes where we say it's for public safety, but then we don't earmark it for that. I would support this 100% if 100% of the proceeds went for public safety. But I didn't see sunset clause in it. To me, it just jumped, dumps it into the general fund. And when you dump in the general fund, it can be used for anything else. Give me, give me a tax measure that goes 100% for public safety and I'm behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. So the next question, the increase of revenue comes from tax base. What have you added for new homes, commercial and industrial developments? So I'll repeat that. Increase of revenue comes from the tax base. So what have you added for new homes, commercial and industrial developments? And Deborah, let's start with you.
Well, I do know that there are various developments in process at the city of Pismo. So new developments, I do also, I touched on a little bit in regard to the affordable housing. And I, and I do know that City of Pismo has become compliant with that. So I would encourage, continue encouraging more affordable housing and bringing in these new developments that are reasonable and not overly extensive for our area.
Okay. Let's hear from Eric.
I'm not quite sure I understand what the question is. So what's the old saying? Answer the question you wish you'd been asked. And I, I think that this is somewhat attached to, do we want to grow? Do we want to annex into Price Canyon? Do we want to next into Los Robles del Mar? And I don't believe that that's where the destiny of Pismo Beach lies. I, residential development does not pay for itself from the tax base. So when we're looking at growing, I, I believe in responsible growth. I believe in infill, but I don't believe in urban sprawl. I believe in smart growth. I think we need to live within what our resources are.
Thank you, Eric. Marcia?
Well, I believe, I agree with what Eric said. And also, increased revenue doesn't necessarily have to be new homes. When you're offering the public or a home buyer something of value, they will, they are willing to pay more. As we have seen the increase in values over the last year, two years, five years, 10 years in this area. And, you know, in my opinion, we need to be very careful with any development that we have, that it serves the community, that it enhances the community and it doesn't drain the community. Because our increased revenues on increased home values really, I think in the end, will pay for it. So that's my opinion.
Okay, great. Thank you. Scott?
Well, I'm gonna agree that I'm not really too sure what the question is. But, you know, when it comes to development within the city, you know, we've got a number of commercial properties now that are sitting vacant, dilapidated buildings. We've got a lot of room for improvement with the land we already have. Last thing we need to be looking at is going further outside our, our lines now where we're at. We need to be looking at infill first. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. And James?
Yes, hi. I'm not sure exactly what the question was either, but it does sound like something more for the, excuse me, current council members. But new developments do pay an impact fee, depend proportional to their scope. So there's money there. Growth needs to be carefully planned so as not to negatively impact the community. I'm not sure if that answers the question, but that's it.
Okay. Thank you so much, James. Thank you, everyone. So another question, do you support the Shell Beach design guidelines? And do you support limiting new commercial projects on Shell Beach Road in bulk and height to conform to the village ambiance? So Scott, let's start with you.
I do support the Shell Beach guidelines. And my issue, I'd say with them is, is, you know, initially when they were set, they are a guideline. And so architects have designed to those standards. And even when they follow the standards to a T, there is no guaranteed route to success for approval. And so I think we have to be careful that we don't keep changing the, the, the marker of success. They have to know clearly what is needed in order to achieve a permit.
Okay. Thank you. James?
Yes, I, I agree with the Shell Beach guidelines also. But you have to keep in mind that people do have property rights and have certain rights of design and things that they'd like to have also. I think as long as, as a project is done within the rules and meets the planning commission guidelines, that, and that should be okay. I, I think that there is a lot of development along that way that's impacting the residential neighborhoods. We need to look at that. I think that, again, look at how it impacts the people who live there and take that into consideration. Because there's a lot of people now who feel that their lives are very congested and they would like some relief.
Thank you, James. Deborah?
Yes, I do support the Shell Beach design guidelines. And I think the second part of the question was the commercial buildings adhering to the Shell Beach design guidelines. I also very much do agree with that. I, just to touch a little bit on the point that Scott had brought out, when you do adhere to those guidelines and everybody comes forward with a plan adhering to those guidelines, then all of, all of those plans that are submitted in adherence should be equally accepted.
Okay, thank you. Eric?
So the, I, this is another accomplishment, I believe, of the current city council is moving forward with the Shell Beach guidelines. I would, and again, as I don't come from a developer perspective on these things. I come from a community perspective on these things. Shell Beach is a very special place. And if we allow crazy development out of scope of mass and, and bulk from, from what is, is here, we are never going to get it back. And if, if all it took was following a certain rule, a certain rule book, we wouldn't need a planning commission. All these things are, to a certain extent, they're objective standards. But, you know, what, what is fitting with the bulk and scale of the community? That's why we have a planning department. And as far as these commercial projects have come before the, for, come before the planning commission, they have said, no, it does not fit in with the community character. It doesn't comply with the coastal act and it doesn't, it's not right for Shell Beach. I trust our planning commission. And I think we need to be careful that we don't lose our community.
Thank you. Marcia?
The Shell Beach design guidelines was a passion for me. And I was just pleased that we were able to put it together and pass this. I think it preserves the charm of Shell Beach and it was much needed. Now, as far as the commercial development, it's my opinion that there are 800 residential lots and 20 commercial lots along Shell Beach Road. So any commercial lot is the owner's responsibility that they build something that serves the community, that gets people out of their car, walking and walking, shopping, whatever, just out of their car, serving the community. It should have tables out front. Now, the last project that I remember being presented with, there were four vacation rentals on there, which kind of flies in the face of everything that we've been talking about now on this Zoom forum. So any project that's presented there needs to adhere to the Shell Beach design guidelines and serve the public. That's their responsibility. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. So thanks to all of you for the questions and thank you to the audience. With the time that we have left, we've got about 10 minutes left. I want to give each of you an opportunity to do a two minute closing. So I will call on you, you'll have two minutes to share your closing thoughts and then we'll wrap up our evening together. So Deborah, let's go ahead and start with you. And what is it that you would like our audience to leave with?
Okay, well, I touched on it a little bit at the beginning when I was introducing myself. And the reason why I'm running for city council, I really do want to achieve a balance of preserving our beautiful neighborhoods. But at the same time, I do want to welcome our visitors and bring in that needed revenue. And I also want to make sure that we're addressing COVID-19 and adhering to all the guidelines for the safety of everyone, our residents and our small business owners. I really feel that they need to be heard fairly, equally and consistently. And any action that needs to be done on their behalf, we, we need to take that. And then lastly, in regard to the policies and ordinances made by the city of Pismo, I want to make sure that they are fully enforced for the protection of all.
Thank you. James?
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for having me. It's been quite an experience, especially for a rookie like me. In the, in the beginning, when we started, I alluded to the fact that the businesses have the Chamber of Commerce. Businesses also have the LBID, which is, excuse me, Lodging Business Improvement District. These are organizations that work with the city council to boost business. A lot of residents feel that they've been left behind, that not enough attention is paid to them. If I were to be elected, I would like to start a virtual chamber for the people, a place where we could come up with common sense solutions for quality of life issues. A place where we could have open government, open door policy, a place for people to be heard and to move forward with that. I think that in all future things that the city does, the residents should be considered first, the impact on them. We live here, we're looking for a great quality of life. That's why we moved here. I think with a few improvements, we can make it better for everybody, including the businesses. If they had their infrastructure, it would also help the people who live in, in the neighborhoods. And if I were elected, that's what I was striving for. If I'm not elected, I hope I have raised the awareness of what the people are looking for and what I have found by going door to door and talking to people and seeing what, what they would like. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear from Marcia.
I'm proud of my record and all that the city has accomplished in the last four years. Shell Beach design guidelines, Shell Beach streetscape, rebuilding our iconic pier, enlarging and improving our pier plaza, supporting the Pismo Preserve, rebuilding of the Bella Street Bridge, joining Monterey Community Power, using clean energy renewable bonds to make the city energy efficient by replacing outdated heating and cooling systems and installing solar panels in the city yard. And that has reduced our energy costs significantly. My priorities are completing our general plan and local coastal plan update that reflects our community vision, which will be a roadmap for future city councils. Central Coast Blue wastewater treatment plant to recapture the treated water currently discarded in the ocean and will help protect our groundwater basin. Working towards a downtown parking solution.
Working towards a downtown parking solution, maintaining our streets and storm drains along with the continued block protection. I will draw upon my experience and proven leadership to keep the city moving forward and ensure that Pismo Beach remains a great place to live, work, visit, and raise a family. As a council member, resident, and small business owner, I am passionate about protecting our quality of life and have the tenacity to get things done. I would be honored to continue to serving you on the city council. Please vote for Marcia Guthrie on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. Eric?
That is a difficult act to follow. Thank you, Marcia. So, and thank you again to the chamber. And I would again like to thank the people of Pismo Beach for having confidence in me and my ability to govern. Eight years ago, we were in a very different place in Pismo Beach. We were divided. We were angry. We were unhappy over some of the decisions that were being made in our city. And you know what? Things are kind of difficult nationwide. We're in a pandemic. There is wildfires. And, and it's, it's easy to look at the glass as half-empty right now. But in Pismo Beach, the glass is more than half-full. We've accomplished a lot. We're in a beautiful, incredible, safe place. We're in a community where people care about each other. I would just ask for your vote going forward. And I think, you know, given the list of accomplishments for the city, I think we can trust that, that we're only going to continue to do better here as a community. So thank you.
Thanks, Eric. So Scott?
Hello, it's, thank you. And thank you to the chamber for hosting this great forum tonight. Thank you for everybody that's listening in and watching. You know, I would like to bring my 25-plus years of being a small business owner. I know what it's like to start a business in the garage and grow it. I've been fortunate to grow a business that was sizable that way. And I know how to read a city budget. I have a construction background. I have a varied past that I think my skill set will be an asset to our city. And my skill set combined with my passion and dedication and love for our great city is what I think truly sets me apart. So once again, my name's Scott Newton and I'd greatly appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so very much. So on behalf of the Pismo Chamber of Commerce, and specifically, I want to shout out to Lisa, Valerie, and Jeanette for all of their effort in pulling this together behind the scenes. Amazing, amazing ladies. To the candidates, thank you for joining us. And to the audience, thank you for your participation. Be sure to join us tomorrow at 7:30 PM to hear from the mayoral candidates. And don't forget to visit the chamber website, or the Facebook page for more great things coming in the community. Good evening and be well.